Good morning ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm going to ask you the sun, it didn't remain sunny. Before we commence today's meeting, can I ask you either to switch off or make silent on one of our phones? And can you also ensure that your pads are in mute mode? Colleagues, it's a great sadness that I have to formally report the deaths of a former Durham County councillor, Weir Valley district councillor, and West Dorland parish councillor, Andrew Andy Turner. Andy was a Weir Valley district councillor from 1999 to 2003. He served on Durham County council from 2008 to 2017, representing the West Dorland division, even with division over two terms of office. Sadly, I have had to be, I've had to attend two funerals in recent times. Former Durham city councillor Robert Wobbly-Winn, Bob served on Durham city council for ten years, from May 1999 to 2009, representing the Elbert ward and Crosgarth and Framulgate ward. He served as mayor of the city of Durham in 2007 to 2008. Can I ask the council to join with me in standing for a moment's silence? Thank you for that gesture. I thank you and I divert you. I recall after the last meeting, some people were saying they couldn't quite hear me because I'm too softly spoken. I can raise my voice if you wish me to, so I'll not be offended if anyone does say that. We are agenda item one to confirm the minutes of meeting held on the 19th of September. I move the minutes, Chair. Can I have a mover? Thank you, councillor Lennay. Can confirm the minutes. Can I have a second bit?
Please second them, Chair.
Thank you, councillor.
Chairman. On point twelve, I made a statement about the audit committee. There's nothing mentioned in them minutes about the audit about that. What I'm not prepared to harvest, I'll give the statement again to the clerk later on if you want. I'm not very prepared as you take it upstairs to the naughty boys' room and be told I can't say certain things. I said nothing under words and if I were to send me another like that, I'd send it to two places where they won't be sent. I'd like that recorded, please.
Well, I would like to consider that the appropriate time in the citizens' agenda. Thank you councillor Shaw.
Chairman, I'd like to take that issue up with councillor Shaw for a global meeting.
Okay, we have the, um... I'm asking you to agree to the minutes of the correct rate. Would kind of agreement?
Agree.
Thank you. In that case, we would want to, agenda item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any items of business on the agenda? Thank you for that, taking us to chairman's announcements. Colleagues, we live in a beautiful county, I don't know if I need to tell you that. And what makes it even more welcoming for residents and visitors alike is the abundance of flower displays in many of our towns and villages. That's not just the council at work, but there are parishes, community groups, businesses, and many more all coming together to brighten up where they live. It was my pleasure to recently have been all creating blue finals, where I was delighted that many settlements from Little to Dintiesdale, Sedgefield and Tanfield achieved the highest standard of gold and others such as Chesterley Street, Belmont achieved best in class. All eight in the south of the county achieved gold and best new entry in its first year of taking part in the competition. Indeed, on that morning, ladies and gentlemen, my hands were starting to hurt with clapping so much. It was no surprise that after so many winning entries for Durham itself, from St Cumber's Hospice to Belmont to the Cathedral, Botanic Gardens and Business Improvement District, that Durham City also scored gold and was category winner. Also judged to be best in Northumbria overall and awarded this rather large trophy, which I think is... Do we see? If that isn't good enough, as many members will have heard, Durham City has also won the best small city category in the National Britain in Blue finals and its fourth national gold in a row. I am delighted that several members of the council's team that helped to achieve these results, from the nursery men who nurtured the plants to the grounds team that maintain them are here today. I'm showing you, if I need to, the glowing doubting before you. The nurtured plants to the grounds team that maintain them are here today so that we can thank them for their efforts. For those that think this is just about flowers, I would remind them that flowers become fruits. This is not my poetic license, this is from Oliver Sheridan, I thank him for it. Fruits that encourage more visitors to the city, fruits that bring a sense of pride for our workforce, fruits that bring benefits of peaceful surroundings to places like the hospice, fruits that, as the prisoner, provides active interest for inmates, fruits that provide biodiversity, as you can see from our many wildflower schemes. In these challenging times for local government, it is tremendous that these grassroots schemes are still going strong and I know that the whole council would wish to join me in thanking everyone for their sterling efforts. I forgive this, pardon. Well done and blooming wortless. Now, I'm going to come down rather have all of you gentlemen come up here. I'm going to be coming down and I have to invite the team to join with me to receive your trophy. So thank you for your patience. Ladies and gentlemen, it is our trophy missed. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it's such a pleasure to be speaking of such as this. We can do some great work in this company. Takes us to agenda item four, the leaders report. Could I ask the leader of the council to produce this report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Chairman, the weather takes a turn for such colder. The council is ready for winter with new repatriation orders and 42,000 tonnes of salt in County Durham's roads moving. All of our workers have been fitted with 360 degree cameras to improve safety, providing information on weather conditions. Now, due to every year we're supporting the NHS Winter Wellness Campaign, with staff being offered pre-vaccination if we're in contact with vulnerable adults and children and part of their jobs. Earlier this month, on Wednesday the 10th of October, was World Mental Health Day and council and our partners signed the Time to Change pledge of County Durham partnership's annual event held at Groundside on the same day. The pledge demonstrates our commitment to students introducing positive changes to how we think and act about mental health in the workplace. The partnership event attracted 200 participants in huge groups across the county and featured speakers who highlighted innovative approaches to supporting people with mental health needs and the importance of promoting mental health awareness. Our delegates received updates on successful projects and were encouraged to share ideas on how to empower communities to become more resilient. Discussions also held on themes including children and young people, mental wellbeing and tackling stigma and discrimination. The council also signed the Time to Work pledge with trade union representatives prior to our cabinet meeting two weeks ago as part of the TUC campaign for greater employment security for terminally ill workers. Signatories included representatives from the regional TUC, GMB, Unison, Unite, as well as ourselves. This month saw us passing a hundred thousand residents sign-ups to our Do Us Online customer portal. A campaign to encourage customers to sign up to receive their council tax bill electronically helped us reach this milestone. With over three thousand people also taking part to win an iPad which was donated to the council this purpose. Following on from our summer programme, the council again provided free healthy snacks for children during the half-term holiday. Aims at tackling holiday hunger and child poverty, the programme ran from all of the council's leisure centres with swimming pools. The Durham Book Festival, which took place earlier in October, attracted several thousand visitors to a wide variety of events of which I was delighted to attend, remember, and three thousand people engaged with the event. Planning is now underway for next year's 10th anniversary Lumiere and the sponsorship launch event will take place in November when the herald installation will be lit up at its permanent location in the River Weir as the third Lumiere legacy piece permanently on display, permanently on display in Durham. The post very early festival campaign, our marketing programme to celebrate Durham continues with poster and digital display campaigns featuring Lumiere, which colleagues may have seen at Newcastle International Airport and East Coast airline stations and King Cross leaves York and Edinburgh away from these stations. Chairman, turning to the Armistice Centenary, in just a few days' time we mark a hundred years since the First World War armistice on the 11th of November 1918. And a number of events and activities are taking place. The council is working with the Northern Echo to produce a commemorative edition to be published on Sunday, the 11th of November. Hope, a sounding life installation, will be in Millennium Place, Durham to coincide with the centenary from Friday the 9th until Thursday the 15th of November. Alongside Hope, a special performance of the Durham Hymns will take place in the cathedral on Sunday, the 11th of November. The musical play The Muddy Choir will be performed at Gold Theatre on the 1st of November while PTC is short but on the tape from filming in Wyndham Park to feature the story of the fighting rappers in one of their centenary pieces. In addition, a whole host of community commemorations are taking place across County Durham. An information section on our website has been declared and will be live from the 1st of November at www.durham.gov.uk/armisticearmbridge. If I can turn to funding to finish my reports this month. I came to university study recently named County Durham one of the worst areas affected by austerity in the country. According to the findings of this independent study, the county's source spending levels slashed by approximately a third between 2010 and 2017. This week saw the Chancellor's budget statement and despite some additional resources in a few areas which we still await details in terms of how much will be allocated to County Durham, claims that austerity is over would appear to be well wide of the mark. Since 2010, this council has needed to cut its budget by more than £220 million. We still anticipate that significant reductions in the revenue support grant will continue in the forthcoming 1920 financial year. Thereafter, the situation remained uncertain, partly as a consequence of the government's fair funding review, which has yet to report and which could see to redistribute funding to wealthier areas in the south. In the face of this uncertainty, the council alongside all the northern councils is proactively campaigning for genuinely fair funding on the basis of need. We are also warning about the potential impact of a change in the way public health grants are allocated, which could see County Durham as the worst effective local authority in the country losing almost £20 million while areas in the south without anything like our health needs could gain by almost as much. We have started to lobby, save our public health budget and we would ask everyone to join with us in this. My cabinet colleague Owen Gunn has also written to the governing body schools and academies in the county to share our concerns about financial pressures they are currently facing as a result of the government's lack of investment, which, Chair, will certainly not be ended by the purchase of a couple of whiteboards as suggested use for the very small additional sums given to schools in this week's budgets. And one other area we must watch very carefully in months ahead is the success of the European Regional Development Fund promised during and after the 2016 referendum campaign. Yet there are almost no details on how the UK shared prosperity fund will operate and crucially, how it will be distributed. As with the fair funding review and public health funding, we will expect resources to go where they are most needed. Let us hope the government listens.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Hennig. Can I, we want to, are there any questions on this report? Not appearing. Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you, colleagues. Agenda item five, questions from the Area Action Partnerships. Can I ask the head of legal and democratic services to explain the procedure regarding AAP questions, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, members. We have two questions received from the Area Action Partnerships this morning and these will be displayed in turn on the screen. The chairman will invite the AAP representative to the government's portfolio holder to respond. There will be no discussion on matter once the question has been answered and no supplementary questions are allowed. It applies the law as they're placed on the council's website.
First question for today's meeting has been submitted by four together, Area Action Partnership. Can I invite the AAP coordinator, Lee Copeland, to ask their question, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Public transport and scheduling still continues to be a major issue for residents in the fourteenth partnership area. A simple example, they can't get a direct bus from Chiltern in our area to Bishopfold Hospital until 6:45pm. If we want to encourage more ease to public transport, we need to make access to services more convenient through high quality, competitively priced service, local transport. How will the county council work with the bus operators to extend their current offer and how will residents ease their concern to ensure that local transport meets local needs? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Can I have Lee, what's her, your mover to respond, please, connecting this is, councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks to Lee and the AAP for their questions, one. County council works closely with bus operators on a service plan, identifying opportunities for growth, promoting public transport, tackling some of the key problems faced by buses, such as congestion or the highway network. As a cabinet member, I'll be forthwith with the most company leaders alongside our head of service through partnership working on issues such as smart ticketing and technology. We joined before in our new passenger survey as part of the National Negation Project by Passenger Focus, which this year saw overall satisfaction with bus services in County Durham rise to 91% from the highest rate in the country. In this last year, we've also worked successfully with bus companies and colleagues across the north-eastern by authority to standardise the age and eligibility for young people's face, help to simplify the complexities of ticketing and remove some of the barriers to young people's travel. We share a common aim with the commercial bus operators and promote them as comprehensive a bus network as possible to serve the residents of County Durham. However, bus services are expensive to run and rely on income from passengers in order to be viable. Inevitably, there are situations where services that would be desirable are not able to cover their costs through their fare income and are therefore not profitable to run with these commercial services. As a council, we spend over two and a half million pounds each year on contracts for services to address these gaps in commercial network. Unfortunately, under the constraints, meaning it's not possible to meet all concerns. Notwithstanding this, we always welcome feedback and suggestions from residents and this can be done via any of the council's normal channels, including raising the issue to local members, the APs or contact us directly through the public transport link to this government website. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marshall. Can I go on to the second question coming from Greater Edith and Midranch Area Action Partnership? Can I invite the AAP coordinator, Brian Riley, to ask their question, please?
Thank you, Chair. UKA has recently benefited from a number of positive economic developments in the town, including Tatchy, University Technical College and the Forest Park development. However, some employment levels within the gap area remain relatively high. What are the county council's next plans for the grade eight economy and what can grade eight community partnership do to assist? Thank you.
Can I ask the portfolio coordinator, councillor Karl Marshall, to respond, please?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Brian, members of the county partnership for your question. Our ambition is that County Durham is ready to invest, start and grow business thereby generating excellent local employment opportunities. And with the excellent success in the gap area in recent years, there's been proven that it is an attractive location for businesses leading to increased local employment, opportunities which should be gaining increased traction with the local employment rates. Building on the success, investments by Tatchy Rail of £100 million with over 1,300 jobs. Business Durham has been working with Two Six to support workforce recruitment and new business development. Two Six acquired the former Bridgettsu site for $8 million last summer. The site is of national and international importance with highly skilled workers making products for the semiconductor sector with applications in defence and communications. New Lakewood continues to attract investment from Husqvarna, a Swedish company openly known as Flymore, making robotic lawnmowers privately for export and currently recruiting. With the back of the Tatchy rail and Gustav Tallon, the University Technical College South Durham is sending young people armed with STEM qualifications into work and people give apprenticeships with Eneos, Husqvarna, Tatchy Rail, South West Urban Trade and then others going to the University of School Engineering. The new strategic site of New Lakewood Forest Park with £13 million investment from the north-east left is forecast to bring an additional 3,200 jobs. And the spacious park adjacent to Tatchy will bring forward a much needed new employment land to meet the needs of new inward investment and existing companies looking to grow. Earlier this month, the County Durham Engineering Network hosted a annual engineering exhibition at the Excel Centre in New Lakewood. We brought 100 exhibitors and close to 510 each to showcase the strength and the manufacturing capability of the town. In conclusion, between the 500 companies employing 8,000 people, the new employment land being brought forward and the investment by private companies, New Lakewood puts out right future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marshall. That concludes the questions from the AAPs. Can I thank the AAPs, I mean that sincerely, for submitting their questions and coordinators for attending this meeting? Thank you. This takes us, ladies and gentlemen, to agenda item six, questions from the public at which point I will turn to our head of legal and democratic services to explain the procedure. If you got any AAP questions, please.
Thank you, Chairman. We've had one question this morning received from a member of the public, which is now displayed on the screen. Unfortunately, the questioner is unable to attend this morning, so a written response to the question will be sent out following the meeting and the response will also be published on the council website.
Which takes us to agenda item seven, ladies and gentlemen, petitions. There are no petitions for consideration. Agenda item eight, report from the cabinets. Can I ask the lead of the councils to present that report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. The report includes members of the board in favour of the issues considered by cabinet and meeting alone as well as sector's hacker, including delivery proposals for AP heads heads to strategic employment sites, which are set to deliver six thousand jobs, quarter one financial performance management reports, a transport asset management plan, and an update on the North East Combined Authority, with apologies for the typo, I think there was a wrong wording of authority. Breakout to paper reports.
One question has been submitted from Councilor Hopland. The question will be displayed on the screen. Can I ask the Councilor Hopland to ask her question, please?
Thank you, Chair. Can we make a confirm if there will be any increase in the financial contribution if our county council pays as a result of the changes to the North East Combined Authority following the creation of the New North East Combined Authority? And if so, where and how will we consult upon the proposals?
Can I ask the Leader of the Council to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair. And it's first of all worth noting that those changes are just going through at the moment and are expected to be formalised locally only in the next week or two, so that that will be the first meeting of the NECA subsequent to that change should not yet have taken place. So in that regard, the financial arrangements for the North East Combined Authority will be finalised through the Combined Authority Budget Process in the usual way over the coming months to enable the 2019-2010 Combined Authority Budget to be considered for approval in February twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Councilor Hennig. If there are no further questions, can I ask the Council...
Can I just add a supplementary question in that will we be applying what the additional costs are if they are ready and when? Will it be February that we're told?
Yeah, just to repeat, I mean, there is a normal process to that budget. I imagine that that includes scrutiny elements. I look to my scrutiny colleagues, obviously, representing the Combined Authority because they might set on the regions for nonother parts of the Combined Authority. So I think from memory, that process always takes a period of time because the Combined Authority, in fact, it operates like a local authority, so it has a budget process. So that for any proposals that come out, it's indicated before because the Combined Authority hasn't even met yet in its subsequent changes that have happened. So I don't know if there will be any changes, but if there are, they will go through that normal process that takes place.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilor Hennig. There may be no further questions, if there are not. Can I ask the Council to note the report? Thank you. Taking us to General Item Nine, Modern Slavery Charter. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Adult and Health Services to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. The purpose of this report is to present to members a charter to demonstrate the council's commitment to tackling modern slavery. Modern slavery was defined in the 2015 Care and Statutory Support Guidance as a category of abuse, and the latter Modern Slavery Act of 2015 included provisions for victims of slavery, servitude, forced or compulsory labour and human trafficking. Recent government estimates suggest that there are up to thirteen thousand victims of human trafficking in the UK, with an increase in the number of prosecutions since the 2015 Act. Nationally, it is recognised that local work needs to be done to raise awareness and respond to reports of modern slavery. The role councils had to play in this issue were outlined in a guide produced by the Local Government Association in December last year. Locally, where police operations are taking place within the county, the council has been involved throughout the entire process. Additionally, a modern slavery statement has been published and activities to raise awareness have taken place, including multi-agency training, everything in partnership with Durham Constabulary, and these will continue as a key priority. Earlier this month, an anti-slavery toolkit was published to support partnerships to develop their approach, and work will take place to review this toolkit and ensure that best practice is being adopted locally. The charter, which was developed in consultation with trade unions, adopts the key themes of prevention, protection and partnership, and attaches appendix to the report. The council will be ongoing to encourage partner agencies to adopt their own charter. Council is recommended to approve the Modern Slavery Charter and to agree to its publication on the council's website. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Could I have a mover to the report?
Chair, since the introduction of the Modern Slavery Act 2015, a continued picture of victims of modern slavery and human trafficking in the UK has emerged. It's important to get the message out to our community and the wider workforce of recognising and supporting modern slavery through the one oh one number. The governance of modern slavery sits within the local City Garden Dulled Board, and as I said on the board, I am aware of the links with partners to support that message. The local authority and the modern day slavery saving in place, which demonstrates our commitment to raise awareness of this issue and the continued work that is taking place. This modern day slavery charter shows an additional commitment to undertake a range of activities to support our communities and wider workforce and health to prevent and protect victims of modern slavery. The prevention and early prevention are key priorities for the council and local City Garden Board. The charter covers three key themes, the prevention, protection and partnership, and members are asked to clear their part in being eyes and ears of our communities. Our partners will be encouraged to develop their own charters to support this vital work, a range of activities planned to tackle the issues of our community. Chair, may I move the motion and drop?
Thank you, Councilor Hoples. I have a second to the report, please.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Chair, can I put on a call to my third son, Andrej Petik, who has worked highly of the Oldham Charter and doubt it, I don't think it has actually been developed within a year or two. Modern day slavery continues to finish your history, and it is right that this council takes a legal role in raising awareness and introducing policy for the benefit of our communities. During our council, we recognise that we should develop our own default charter to cover the three themes of prevention, protection and working in partnership. I am delighted that we have worked in partnership with the recognition trade union to develop our charter, and I would like them for their positive input and support. By working together with our trade union colleagues to book that under our partner, highly we can make a difference in the key area, and our focus will be developing a charter that can influence all of the community, and that can be supported.
Thank you, Councilor, Chair Brown. I'm sure that everyone in here is grateful for the work that you are doing on us. Do many members have any questions on the report? May I have Councilor Del, Richard Del?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to really support Councilor Hoples' words about us being the eyes and ears of this charter. I mean, feeling in large organisations, of course, we directly carry services from dodgy contractors in the areas where these sorts of things tend to operate, like nail bars or car washes or service plants and waste recycling plants, but we all, as councillors, under these offices, if in fact there's a rapport there, start planning applications for this new conversion, something here or there, or controls about social behaviour or whatever. I think the value of something like this is not so that we can have a ticket that has to say, yes, we've got a charter. The value of this for all of us, as we go about our ordinary business, members not to sweat to keep our rights to use them and report in terms of things that we might perhaps sort of thought was out of concern, as another policy is used here, and now we can look at other things to repeat like that that we shouldn't be sticking our noses in. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Richard, for those positive comments. Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations detailed in the report?
Agree.
Thank you. General Item Ten, co-opted members to the audit committee. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report, please?
I'm the Chair, my members. The term offers for the two co-opted members of the Audit Committee due to respite on the verdict of April two thousand and nineteen. The report sets out two options for victims identified by the Audit Committee, either extending the appointment of the current co-opted members until the thirty of April two thousand and twenty-three, or agreeing a new appointment via adverts in the local press. The Audit Committee has considered the options and is recommending to the council that external contracts, the current co-opted members are extended until the thirty of April two thousand and twenty-three. This is set out in paragraph nine of the report. I'm the Chair.
Can I have a mover to one of the recommendations detailed in the report?
Thank you, Chair.
Lord Eddie Bell?
Thank you, Chair. As Chair, the Audit Committee meeting in September, I've agreed to the recommendation of continuing the existing members until November twenty twenty-three, my members.
Can I have a second, then?
Chair, can I have a second to the report? Thank you for that.
Thank you for that. Do any members have any questions on the report? Which takes us on to, can I ask the council to agree the proposal due move to add certificates?
Agree.
Thank you. General Item Level, local council tax reductions scheme two thousand and nineteen, twenty. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report, please?
I'm the Chair. This report sees council approval for continuing the local council tax reduction scheme with the same level of entitlement as was in place under the council tax benefit system for a further year in two thousand and nineteen, twenty. The background to the report sets out a change that were made to the system providing council tax reductions, which was changed in two thousand and thirteen, when the government moved towards discount scheme to force to a benefit scheme, and passed responsibility for the scheme to local women at that point in time. The council has so far undertaken the scheme benefits in light of all previously awarded under the old council tax benefit scheme, despite only being provided ten per cent when the scheme was transferred to local women. The cost of the scheme in Durham tolls fifty-five point four million, and if the council sought record reduction in grant, we estimate this would save five point one million pounds. This would have resulted in the maximum entitlement revealed to working age children, reducing from a hundred per cent to just over eighty per cent. The report also sets out to maintain the approach passed along to the talent Irish council element of local council tax reduction grant. Cabinet has considered the scheme and recommended a remedial change in two thousand and nineteen, twenty, and the recommendations are set out in paragraph thirty-eight. I'm the Chair.
Can I have a mover to the report? Councilor Allen, you.
Thank you, Chair. As members of this council, we're aware, despite many years of ongoing austerity, this council has been able to protect the most vulnerable people that we serve. The local council tax reduction scheme that was presented to members today is unchanged, and ensures that we continue to be one of few councils to continue to offer the same level of benefit as was the case in the old council tax benefit rules. This is despite ongoing funding for the scheme every year since two thousand and eleven, to honor to say, when it was cut by ten per cent before having to go currently at ten per cent, which is a four point six million hit to this council. We are continuing to live in unprecedented times. The government paralyzed by Brexit with significant risks and uncertainties surrounding our future economic prospects and indeed future local government funding. The decade of grim quarters of austerity continues to affect this council, but it also hits our most vulnerable residents hard, for local people who have seen cuts to their benefits and allowances by a government that simply does not understand. The government that continues to roll the universal credit scheme, despite the bank of evidence showing how this scheme is simply not working for vulnerable people, putting people who need help to work in a more vulnerable position is morally wrong, just following on from the latest address earlier, Chair. If this government were really sincere in ending austerity, it would have lifted the freeze on benefits, and there wouldn't have been caused another one point three million pounds worth of cuts by local authorities. Fourteen point two million, which is a further reduction in our revenue support grant. In two thousand and eleven, the revenue support grant was one hundred and sixty-seven million pounds. Once this fourteen point two million comes out, there's only another fourteen point two million left this year, and then with the fourteen point two million, that will label us with twenty-seven million pounds of what is left of the revenue support grant, which will be swallowed up in the business rate retention. So we've seen one hundred and forty million of ORST. This is a grant which is there to support the day-to-day running of our services. Council is satisfied that we can continue to protect thirty-four thousand law-income households across our county, without them ending by awarding them up to one... For a further year into two thousand and nineteen, twenty. We are currently one of only two councils in the region, and disappointingly, one of the grandly number of councils across the country, who continue to demand a hundred per cent support for working age council tax payers in the sake of raw incomes. Of course, it has meant wide choices on setting budgets over the last ten years, but I'm sure everyone in the chair recognizes the importance of maintaining this scheme for as long as we possibly can. And what we've seen here, across the country, across this region, but across the country, when I speak to colleagues, where they have put their charge on the council tax, what they have seen is a reduction in the council tax collection rates. Their collection rates have gone down, but what they've also seen is an increase in people being summoned to court. So court summons is increased, and then what happens with three courts to that? They get the bailist involved, the first letter's fifty quid, the second letter's fifty quid. To get them into court, it's another hundred and fifty quid. So the two hundred and fifty pound down on so that they can afford to be in the first place. So the spiral into debt, so they'll never ever get out of that. So, Chair, I'm whole in that this little bit what we're doing helps to face the problem that they're actually doing and paying themselves. Of course, the landscape has changed in the war and war law, council tax support claims are in the same universal credit, where the level of their income can change frequently, meaning there can be many changes to their retirement. We may have to consider changes to our scheme in the future if we take universal credit, until, first of all, by limiting the number of bills they receive. The Chair, our office officers to take a look into this, we'll see what the findings are, and we will report back in due course. These councils deserve our support for as long as we can afford it, Chairman, and I'm more than happy to move the recommendations as detailed in the report.
Thank you, Councilor Navy, here. Your rest of the day is welcome. Can I have a second to the report, please? Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Chair. I'm all happy to take this report. It's all free, the potential government, quite a figure playing, a local government, and our elected residents struggle financially, but their ground control and welfare involvement has fallen down. Our multi-tiered community, their base in the non-toll, welfare policy changes on this government, there's no effect on their quality of life. And how that did come through, from a view that managed to maintain the reform, to ensure the reduction from the council tax benefit scheme, and to go by the government and not have found still to rely on the portable. There is increasing evidence that working age families can push further burdens for our sector by not having to spot hundreds and use the payers at a very rate, which will wrap up the additional costs of around four hundred pounds for a relatively small council tax bill, a stable one hundred and fifty pound a year. Fortunately, we will avoid these issues in nineteen twenty, if, as the Chair presented, if we follow recommendations that agree. The council will go to health, protect the policy again, manage the administration, Chair.
Thank you, Chair, Sir Chair Brown. Do any members have any questions on the report? Fair enough. Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations detailed in the report?
Agree.
General Item Twelve, Annual Report of the Standards Committee, two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen. Can I ask the Chair of the Standards Committee to present the report, please? Councilor Del?
Hi, Chair. As Chairman of the Council Standards Committee, I'm pleased to present the committee's annual reports. This report reflects on the work of the committee for the period two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, as well as setting out the proposed direction for the current year. The annual report demonstrates how the committee helps the council, makes it statutory duties to maintain and promote high standards of conduct by its members. The committee monitors a standard picture at both the local and the national level. At the local level, the report sets out the summary of the Code of Conduct Conference At a local level, the report sets out the summary of the code of conduct complaints, which have been dealt with during the year. Two complaints were received in 2017 and 18, as for the previous year, but however, there has been an increase in the number of complaints where a local resolution was recommended. Three complaints were referred for local investigation by the monitoring officer. On the 3rd month of August 2017, the monitoring officer hosted a special training on the code of conduct for delegates from all parish and town councils. The session was well attended and generated good debate and discussion. In addition, the monitoring officer has delivered training with individual parish councils and has arranged similar training, similar training sessions in the coming weeks and months. The committee has also reviewed the member code of conduct, the protocol and member officer relations, and the assessment procedure for complaints against members. At a national level, the committee has responded to consultations on support changes to the disqualification criteria for local members and reviewed the ethical standards in local governments. The committee has noted that complaints regarding perceived improved use of social media platforms are only increased both local and nationally. Therefore, governance and training is being developed on this topic to assist both county, parish and town council members. The Standards Committee remain fully committed to supporting and advising local councils where necessary, and in conjunction with the county attorney association of local councils. I stand with the monitoring officer and her staff, the independent persons, and the wider committee for their support throughout the year. I therefore ask council to note the report.
Thank you, Councilor Kellings. Do any members have any questions on the report? There are none. Can I ask the council to note the report?
Agree.
Which takes us to the generating 13, motions on notice. We have one motion that is due thing, a motion will be displayed on the screens. Can I invite Councilor Mark Wilkes to move his motion please? I think you have given time next time.
Thank you Chairman, colleagues Chairman. The church of Hertfordshire, in one part of County Durham, ripples out to other areas. These ripples can actually have a bigger impact as far as our particularly to our rural areas, but in reality, they actually affect all of our electrical divisions. For that reason, I'm frightened obviously, and I'm told to find it, so the people can speak as well. But when discussing issues of this kind, it's very difficult not to get across it in a political standing now. I'm sure if we find bullets in all directions of this chamber about the downgrading of Bishop Auckland Hospital and indeed downgrading all the health facilities in County Durham, but I'm not one of them to do that today, to be distracted with the matter at hand. Ward Six, the Bishop Auckland Hospital provides step down care, care for patients who do not get any sense of care, so they're not yet ready to be treated. Ward has a standard capacity of 24 beds, and it's a significant proportion of the step down beds in this county, which shows to be a real problem too. And I'm not a doctor, no doctor professes to be a health professional, but a doctor basic capacity, plus in that number of beds, he's going to have an impact. And I'm convinced that this isn't going to be the last reduction in hospital beds in this county, which is why this matters to all of us. Yes, the NHS has post questions, yes, there's a debate being had about funding, but if the way in which an NHS trust is run has become ideologically driven by a centralization or top heavy management or a bonus setting in the long areas, then no argument about the total amount of funding available are really going to help. Now, I spoke to somebody pretty high up who's involved in healthcare, who look like a lot of these, and they are astounded by what plan that Bishop Auckland has. In some areas of the region, they're actively looking to increase their step down bed numbers in the midst of the winter. I'm not going to give anything more absurd, just because you're heading into the winter, than to remove capacity at this hospital. We have no idea how bad the winter season is going to be, we have no idea how bad the winter is going to be. Closing a ward in November makes no sense at all. Closing this time of ward at the moment, with the capacity problems we have generally, is unacceptable. Now, Council Charlie Kay, I hope he won't mind me saying this, he summed up at a meeting at Bishop Auckland Hospital a few weeks ago, and he's mentioned in the little paper, I'd just like to say what he said, if you are to close more step down wards, you get more burden on the community, it's broken, and what you're going to do is make it even more broken.
Bang on round Charlie, that's not exactly what says that, but what we reported.
Yes. That's very fair, yeah, that's quite fair, he's absolutely right. We all have different views as to what the reason or reasons it's broken are and the ways it's been. But I brought this motion forward because I believe that there is no other options for us than to call on Secretaries State to intervene now, not tomorrow, not next week, now. I applaud Council Robinson and Council Hoddle for the work that they've been doing and to make sure that this goes to scrutiny in two weeks, but we need to come out all guns bladed jointly collectively and the county, doing whatever we can, wherever we can to stop this motion. Time is absolutely critical though, because the process of voting, Secretary State takes time, and any day now, we may see new information intake into the ward, halted, or staff start to be reassigned, we just don't know what's going on, and I don't trust the trust. We can't delay calling the Secretary States to intervene, please support Ward Six, support Bishop Auckland Hospital, and support this motion, so that collectively, we can say that we are absolutely opposed to the trust plan. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Wilkes, is there a second to this motion?
Chair, I'll hold the second, Council Wilkes is watching. Can I get my notes? Ward Six was set up in October 2009, a 24 beded nursing led step down unit. It was set up to ease the pressures on Darlington and Durham hospitals, when Bishop Auckland lost its A and A, intensive care units, and many, many more. Ward Six accepts patients deemed to be medically fit and stable, or patients that require ongoing 24 hour nursing support, who are unable to be discharged full. Patients in the nursing led unit on Ward Six receive continuing the non-procute nursing intervention, including intravenous medication, prior to discharge to an appropriate and safe environment at the backland of Ward Six. We are often told by the trust that Bishop Auckland Hospital plays a big part within the trust. If that's the case, why or why do they continually cut down and close down wards and services at Bishop Auckland? The management record of the executive team at County Durham and Darlington Foundation Trust is one of failure and closure when it comes down to Bishop Auckland Hospital. The whole process surrounding Ward Six and the lack of public engagement has caused tension within our communities of Bishop Auckland and surrounding areas, and also the staff of Ward Six, which they absolutely disprove. I know that scrutiny meets on the 15th of November, and the trusts have paused the closure until scrutiny decides, but I think they're being caught out and they've been pushed into this, and again, well done to the Chair of Scrutiny for making this happen. But this motion, if we can all agree, would put extra pressure on the trust regarding their final decision on Ward Six.
Right, you have one minute.
Helen Goodman, Helen Goodman is handing over a petition to Parliament today, which will also put even more pressure on the trust. We have not created this situation which we find ourselves in as councillors of Durham. In timescale, the hospital trust have put us in this position. The ward closure needs to be halted before it's too late. It will have an adverse effect on this council's budget, an adverse effect on people's healthcare, and adverse effect on staff morale. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. Now, I move to, does any member wish to speak on the motion? And I have Councilor Lucy Hollis, Lucy.
Yes, I'm going to move an amendment, Chairman, but I will outline one or two things before we get there, but I have indicated I would be moving this amendment, and I have had conversations with the Council at this, because I do think his motion is probably a bit premature, and we should have looked for the councils' processes that we have completed, to make sure that scrutiny looked at in very great detail and carried out the courses that we've got in the council. So, if I could start, Chairman, I would, I would like to say that the campaign led by Helen Goodman is also being led by local people in relation to the closure of Ward Six officially at Bishop Auckland Hospital. And the campaign has declared that the government's policy of underfunding NHS, our country's most valuable institution, is leading to the closure of Ward Six at Bishop Auckland Hospital. With the Tory government putting NHS to breaking point, County Durham and Durham Trust have been put into an impossible situation where patients are taken their place. After I've rendered part of the country, we have more people living older age, however, our local people are living a lot more longer years in better health than parts of the country. We must ensure that any changes to any local health services are based on needs of local people and give consideration to the impact of any changes to services on the care provided to local people. However, we have a clear course set in this council, and this will happen for any changes to local services to be discussed fully. The original motion is premature, as scrutiny has not had opportunity to be agreed to cause changes, this matter is due to be considered by a closer wellbeing in this council to invest on the 15th of November. This amendment, as I put forward, calls on scrutiny to provide a thorough examination of what has been counted out and to investigate fully how services can be changed. This is the role of the scrutiny, and that's why I am proposing the amendment to the council, but this motion as being put forward by Council Wicks.
Thank you, Council Hoddle. Do I have a second to this amendment? Council Wicks.
Thank you Chair. I second the amendment to Council Wicks. County Durham Darlington Foundation Trust has agreed for the closure of Ward Six at Bishop Auckland Hospital. This will ensure that cross party advocacy, and help all the scrutiny committee would be able to carry out an examination of the proposed changes to services. And as Lucy's already pointed out, this will take place on the 15th of November, and will ensure a thorough examination into the rationality of the proposed change and how services can be changed. The scrutiny has the power to refer service change to the Secretary of State based on the evidence that you see, this is the most appropriate way of addressing this issue. Thanks Chair.
Second, you, Council Wicks.
But Chair, can I just, my good. Explanation please Chair, in the second page. Because in this, it's not an amendment, it's simply a completely new motion. It has no resemblance to what's actually on paper, what it's actually using. And I defy anybody in this room to be able to say that it is the title of an amendment, it's not a new motion. Everything is.
So, just to clarify, for amendments, you're going to leave out words, it can leave out words and insert or add others, or insert or add words, as long as the effect is not an exclamation. And I consider that an exclamation, because it, it's not to say that you don't absolutely oppose, and it's still, but you still need to open the floor if there was scrutiny in it.
I'm sorry Chair, but that is not, it does not mention the word of the state. The whole point of this new motion is to refer this matter to the Secretary of State by removing that element of it, it is no longer an amendment to the motion, it's a new motion.
As I see it, from the Chair, I see this as a procedural point.
Where can be deleted from motions under the Constitution? So the deletion of the referral to the Secretary of State is acceptable?
At which point I will ask, if you have questions, comments? I do need to have Heather O'Neil to create this, explain this point.
Thank you Chair. So now that the amendment has been moved and seconded, the debate moves on to the amendment. So the people that have protested to speak will be speaking on the amendment as shown on the screen. Each member can speak once on the amendment, with the exception of Council Wilkes, who moved the substantive motion, he has the right to reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, the amendment is carried, it will then become the substantive motion. If the amendment is not carried, the debate returns back to the substantive motion that was moved by Council Wilkes. At that point, further amendments may be moved.
So that takes us to questions, comments from the members. And I have Richard Dow, Council Richard Dow.
Thank you Chairman, I will speak against the amendment and in support of the motion. I think the amendment misses the points in two important respects. Firstly, Helen Goodman's petition talks about funding cuts and beastly cuts of certain women's small, the rest of it, an easy and cheap point for a Labour Party to make, but this issue is primarily one of health plus management and the other contempt it has shown for scrutiny processes found. We discussed step down care quite briefly, it's health scrutiny, a committee, and a very active member of, and an on our September meeting, December of September, which was discussed in the context of the creative hospital search field, Barlet Castle, Shottley Bridge etcetera, I think the question was asked about Bishop Auckland, that they were looking at Bishop Auckland, but the health authority have had numerous opportunities to bring Bishop Auckland to the table in health scrutiny, numerous opportunities, they have simply failed to do that, they have pressed ahead with a very secretive and underhand plan to close the facility. And this isn't the case where a normal, oh let's have a chat with scrutiny will work. I think we need to mark it out here and send a very strong message to the council of, darling, and it's us, that this sort of behaviour, treating health scrutiny and the people of this county with such contempt, is not acceptable. This is primarily a health management issue, be assured of that. I asked the very question in the September meeting, whether the talk about these teams, about patients, and that we do it in the community, district nurses, blah, blah, blah. Surely it will cost you more money to administer this sort of care in the community than it will in a specialized step down ward where all the facilities, which is busy all the week, etcetera, are there. And there was no answer to that. I'm not convinced this is about funding, I'm not sure what it is about, and to be honest, but what I am convinced about is, there is a danger of, if this goes ahead, of the county council.
One minute.
The county council, and when you're picking up the tab, this seems to me like a perfect bit of responsibility shunting, you shut these people out of the community, they are not capable of being careful, adding up the balance of the nursing teams, and we end up picking up the tab. And I think that the health plus needs to come in no certain terms, needs to work with us, with the council in partnership to address these issues. We need a very strong message in my brain, this medium out amendment does not convey that message from the original motion, it does.
Thank you Chair. Thank you, Council Bell, do I have Councilor Tania Turner?
Thank you Chair, colleagues. But thank Council Wilkes for bringing the motion, I also thought that Council was seconded, but I appreciate Council Hoddle's amendment, because one of the things she's actually mentioned is people. And for me, this isn't just about the trust and their actions, it's about the people at the end of the service. If you, if you read Bishop Auckland quite a lot, Councilor there has a buzz phrase, people before politics, he's not mentioned people. And if you think about the people involved, he hasn't really, he hasn't, we've got a very high number of people in Bishop Auckland, he's set up a webpage. We've got a very high number of people in Bishop Orkham, who set up a webpage on Facebook, who started up, who got behind Helen Goodman, to share her petition to go out, campus the signature, attend a public link, march through the streets. And at the end of the day, it's about the people. The reduction in health services has an impact on people. And you think about austerity, according to the Collins dictionary, austerity is a situation in which people's living standards are in jeopardy because of economic difficulties. So if you think about difficulties and the people that we all represent, now they're going to pay a point of care. What if you can't afford to get to the point of care because your point of care has been taken away? There's no shuttles between the hospitals anymore, there used to be. Patients used to use it, it worked quite well, but it's one of the third things to go with austerity. We do have patient choice, however, but what good is patient choice if the services you need are not available if you need to talk though? Patient choice is no choice if it means choosing between putting on the gas and electric, feeding your family, or using the money to travel to Durham or Darlington to attend a hospital appointment. The more services are taken away from our local hospital, the more difficult it is for our people. The people that we represent to actually attend hospital appointments, before to have the money, travel is expensive, and if you're visiting the local ward to travel further, travelling further to visit costs more, people just do not have that reason for it. This is not just about the proposed closure of Ward Six, it's about the ongoing lack of consideration with staff and patients in local services, it's about the ongoing underpund in public services, it's about the staff that the NHS has been treated by capital markets, sold to the Lord's Will and then sent on the way. This motion is definitely about people and we should remember the people. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council Teller. Can I say I have Rob Crute, Charlie Kay, Joy Allen, Old Temple, Heather Shield, John Shuttler, and Adrian Patterson, so accumulating this chair. Can I tell you, Council Rob Crute?
Thank you, Chair. I'm very much supportive here because Hoddle began to refer the Secretary of State and actually stepped out of the correct procedure in terms of... I've got to say at this point, I'm surprised that nobody's been up on the door for scrutiny of us before this motion was lifted because there is a procedure that follows. In my opinion, the correct procedure is to view responsibility for this to the relevant scrutiny committee, which is, of course, is adults wellbeing and health. That has already happened, the Chair of the Adults Wellbeing and Health Committee has already written to the Chief Executive of the Foundation Trust. As a direct consequence of that, the Chairman of the Foundation Trust has agreed to propose the closure of Ward Six, in addition to agreeing, along with being told, to terminate the Adults Wellbeing and Health Committee on the fifteenth of November to discuss this further. I haven't said that. Now, with all that going on in the background, to now ask this council to refer this to the Secretary of State at this stage simply doesn't make sense. To be honest, it's completely out of step because we're halfway through the process. So I would urge every member in here to get behind those hobbles, follow that amendment, and allow the scrutiny function of this council to follow due process.
Thank you, Council Crute. And Council Charlie Kay.
Thank you, Chair. On the eighteenth of October, I, along with our President, attended a very well-attended packed meeting in Bishop Orkham on the issue of the proposed closure of Ward Six. And that meeting, as I say, was very well-attended. And I actually came away from there thinking, you know, this is one time where actually we might transcend politics because the prize at the end, the goal at the end is above politics. And I came away from there with a pretty positive frame of mind about it. So I was very amused when I saw this motion coming to council's favor because it clearly is a card before the horse. All know what the prescribed process is, we all know what we need to follow. And it's very disappointing for me to see members, I'm not saying most of you don't mind in my chair, by the way, you'll notice I don't read from a script, so if I've all grabbed a bit of it, just bear with me, will you? However, I genuinely wanted to see this as an issue of transcend politics, pragmatism, not ideas, and that's what's needed here. And I have to say that I feel that almost as a member of that scrutiny, there's been an attempt at certain methods, to certain methods system, just to get five minutes on that camera if it's working up there. And I don't have time for that, Chair. I would go, this is too important for political policy. And I'm afraid, I want to say, that's what we've seen this morning. This could be no more using this issue as a football than if you're old, might get sized five on the side of it. Those of you who play the football background will know what that means, the rest of you might be lost, I apologise for that. We will have our meeting, we will have our day with the trust on the fifteenth of October, sorry, November, that's twice another day gone, by the way, so don't forgive your lack of tolerance here, and then we'll be here, I apologise for that, we'll move on. We will have our day with the trust as the provided process tells us to do. So I made a mistake, on that day, we would be demanded from the trust that they scrap this unnecessary, this unnecessary act, that is going to seriously have an impact on the community we represent because we all know that adults wellbeing doesn't cover the cost of the council tax base in County Durham. And all this is doing is cushioning more people and more of a system that is not able to cope with it. So Chair, could I ask one thing before I sit down? I'm here to educate.
One minute.
I'm in it, wait, I'm back to me, it's been a minute. What I'd like to ask, and if I'm wrong educating, I'd like to ask the head of legal services, as I understood it, being an extra council boy, that full council couldn't actually refer to a second statement, it would have to be the scrutiny committee to do that. So if that's the case, then all complaining about the amendment is erroneous. And whether it's erroneous or not, let's not get tied up in top air in words here, let's move on together and let's give due process this chance. I look forward to seeing you all on the fifteenth of November where we will do due process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council Kay. Council Joy Allen.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to speak in support of Hoddle's amendment. The local members of Bishop Orkham have been supporting Helen Goodman and nursing staff on Ward Six and the community to fight this very unpopular short-term closure. Residents are being filing their petitions in their thousands, marching in the streets, lobbying the trust for public meetings and writing to the local press. I have to say, everyone in our locality were delighted when scrutiny stepped in to pause the proposed closure consultation. The trust will now attend to it, as we've said, on the fifteenth of November, which I know will be attended by many local people. As members of our aware, scrutiny exists to influence the quality and decisions made by council and other local organisations involved in delivering public services. And with a letter and intervention, and interventions from our Chairman of Scrutiny, Council John Rockwell, and our partner, Council Lucy Hoddle, there's the QWIS, please welcome forth. On the fifteenth of November, the cross-party scrutiny committee will meet to gather evidence and to make recommendations. If they are not satisfied with scrutiny, they will refer the matter to full council for it to be called into the Secretary of State, which is the correct and proper procedure. In the meantime, we will continue to keep up the pressure locally and nationally. In fact, tonight, as Council bears this, Helen is going to present a petition of over fourteen thousand signatures to Parliament and call for the proposed closure to be abandoned.
Thank you, Council Hoddle. The time allowed of the motion is thirty minutes, unless the council consents to extend the time. We have a number of people still wishing to speak and we have five minutes left. Does Council read to extending the time? Do you agree this is an important issue? Which takes us to Council Alves.
Chair, I advise to speak with the matter of the scrutiny committee, I haven't intended to speak today, I hope we will pass the social. A lot is being made in due process and the real problem here is that the process has not been followed by the NHS. In September, we had a meeting of the Adults Committee, we got two reports, one of those reports said that the ideal size of ward for step-down care was twenty-four beds. A second report at the same meeting pointed out that there was only one ward at twenty-four beds in this county and that's at Bishop Orkham. Elsewhere, we have eight at Shottley Bridge, sixteen to twenty-three at Chetham Street, sixteen at Sedfield, sixteen at Weirdale, sixteen at Richardson, only Bishop Orkham has twenty-four. So the NHS produced these reports for us, with now a whisper of what was to happen at Bishop Orkham. Now, the reason why I'm red that list of hospitals is that for all of us, we're next in the queue. If we don't stand up for one, they will fall like dominoes. So due process has its place, but the role of this council also has a place as a whole, as a body, so that we commit together, a hundred and twenty-six of us representing the whole council, not like myself as a member of Adults Wellbeing, one of the smaller number, who seek to keep the NHS to account. So I probably could have said this emotion if the amendment had actually said what Council Alves just said, which is that if scrutiny doesn't get the right answer, we will go on to the Secretary of State.
One minute.
But the amendment says absolutely nothing about it, it merely removes the Secretary of State. So I minded not to vote for this amendment unless the mood of it is going to add something about going to the Secretary of State.
Now, Council Alan Shield.
Thank you, Chair. I think we need to acknowledge and appreciate that healthcare scrutiny is taking the actual interest in the ongoing developments of the health service, not only in Bishop Orkham, but the whole of County Durham. The NHS has been fortunate to have limited engagement with public, did I mention previous examples of miscommunication, Sunderland, Cramton, Warwick, Rothbury, Bishop Orkham, and also Shottley Bridge Community Hospital? I'm part of a reference group which has been active since October twenty thirteen, engaging with NHS and local council offices. And we've seen during this time, the numerous withdrawal services from Shottley Bridge Hospital, and that withdrawal services has reduced the footprint and therefore just denied the potential future of Shottley Bridge or somewhere else in North West Durham. Can I also mention that the Secretary of State for Health, Matt Hancock, has actually publicly stated that the closure of community hospitals and cottage hospitals and the transfer of staff and patients to larger acute hospitals must cease. I think we have to hold him to account on that. So I endorse the motion on notice. I think what we are providing is a belt and bris as example. We're not waiting for scrutiny to hold the NHS to account, this council is holding the NHS to account. So Chair, I urge everybody to endorse the motion on notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Alan Shield. And then Council John Shuttler.
Thank you, Chair. I think we really need all the same concerns here, and all the disagree with what's coming here, this affects people, relative to people who live, affects people in Weirdale, Deistale, Cruth, Bishop Orkham, all the surrounding areas. If you were to attend that meeting, I think in the beginning of October, and all I saw in that front bench was October, the amount of the executive salaries, and the NHS plus just represent the last passing of restrictive practices, because they just do what they want, and they're going to do what is they want.
Thank you, Council Shuttler. And then another.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to counter against what I need to be prepared with, but I want to expect on this given that I thought everyone would support. This isn't about my own business and I want to say that I regret to cancel the last time the Exma Chair and he puts health scrutiny and adult services before everything else that I should have to share with the Chair of that council. And I agree with what Council Shattler said, this is about to raise a show, the degree to postpone the decision until I believe in the day after the scrutiny. That doesn't give us any time to look at it afterwards. This is about people, exactly what Council took it as, it's about people, it's about the people who will be glopping our acute hospital beds because there's nowhere for them to go. It's about the lady who are my enemy, who was stuck in the R B I for twelve weeks because she couldn't go back to her nursing home because her nursing home place was a care place, not a nursing place, so they can't look after her because the car's not had a nursing care that is step down wards. We need to look at these things. If we close this ward, we have one huge hospital left in County Durham which is only the ward here, people will not be able to get out of it because they have nowhere to walk, because they're not willing or they need to be to go straight home. So that means that that council closed it with A and E departments. The people who need A and E treatment in County Durham then end up in Newcastle, then end up in Valdez and Sunderland because they have to close the A and E department because they can't let anyone out through the door. So this has a knock-on effect. We need to look at this now, we need to make sure that we refer it now and scrutiny will look at the bigger picture because we are all in here, this isn't the first hit and it's not going to be the last hit that comes across our doors of scrutiny. But we must hold the NHS to account and make them acknowledge that we need to be consulted, we are related, represent the people out there, and we must...
That's another question. Could I have Andrea Patterson, please?
Thank you, Chair. The Chair for the day also stands for this, I'd like to thank Council Hoddle and Council John Robinson in their part in actually getting Council Durham Foundation Trust to pause this process. I want to just pick up on some of the points that are already being said and we issued what council approved there. It reminds the members that we've got a duty of care here, we've got a duty of care to act legally in line with the council constitution, and we've got a duty of care to do the very best by our residents. The removal of any health care provision legally is an emotional issue and one that we're all very passionate about. However, what I'm for, that's been called, is for us to contravene the local government and to abandon our council constitution and ignore the terms of reference from our health scrutiny committee. If you want to check page one fifty-five, it does say in the constitution that this matter can only refer to the Secretary of State on recommendation from the Adults Health and Wellbeing Board in the scrutiny committee. It's not a council decision, it's a scrutiny decision. Chair, the motion is being accepted on a technicality of words, asking for the Secretary of State's consideration, and it is just that, it's intervention, but we're not actually getting the evidence first. What I would say, Chair, is that compared to local members here from Bishop Orkham, from Weirdale, and in my own world and across the county, it is very emotional, it's something where we know it's going to have a significant and detrimental effect on our residents. But we don't know what is being proposed, we don't know what the trust is proposing, we don't know twenty-four beds are going to be provided elsewhere. Some of you might just... Would you get, you know, would you pass sentence and say someone is guilty without looking at the evidence first?
One minute.
No, you won't. If you're a woman in this small town, you look. You will lose your case if you hadn't went through your company's freedom procedure first. Members, we love to be stupid, if we ask the Secretary of State to intervene, someone needs to be told to have actually looked at the evidence. So we need to allow this due process to take place. I'll close by saying, Chair, we've got one chance at this, and without the evidence, we run the risk of this important matter being disregarded by the Secretary of State, which will ultimately let all of our residents down. I urge all members to do the right to honour our residents and support the amendment and the scrutiny process.
I have councillor John Clare, Paul Power and Alan Yardman. Councillor John Clare.
Thank you Chair. May I apologize for the evening of the night so that I didn't speak on this, but like councillor Hobbles, I'm intending to. I have something to say, which I don't believe has been said clearly already. And I acknowledge the passion of everybody. I don't think there'll be a person in the chamber who does not oppose the possible closure of Ward Six. And I would want to say that the amendment is not in any way intent to reduce that passion to draw the teeth of the motion to circumvent or subvert it. It's about doing the job properly. I cannot see how this chamber can declare its absolute opposition to the closure when we haven't yet finished sorting out the facts of the matter and what's happening through the scrutiny process. We lay ourselves open councillor Wilkes, to our motion being dismissed and we go, how can they possibly say this when they haven't even finished looking at it yet? Which I believe is the fact that councillor Patterson made. And the second thing I would say is that if we press ahead and present this motion as it is, declaring our absolute opposition to going to the Secretary of State, then when we go through the scrutiny procedure, after that, what we go through the scrutiny procedure will be dismissed on the ground that, oh, this is predetermined, aren't they? Then they've set off in belief and then it just turns out with the scrutiny procedure. So councillor Patterson is absolutely correct. We have to do this by the proper mode, by the proper process. And that is what the amendments do. So we end up with a justified complaint at the end of it. Thank you Chair.
And then councillor Paul Power please.
Thank you Chair. And I think, I acknowledge that the rather nasty account of the government, so we understand that you're what you're talking about, this sort of scrutiny, but I embrace the constitution to that extent. But what I find disappointing is that, the mere motion to be put forward for our votes as a council supporting Ward Six, right, hands up, page four, four, six. No question, no debate. The motion has been put forward, the third amendment has been put forward, I cannot possibly overturn it. Because the amendment that's been put forward is supporting Helen Goodwin's petition. Helen Goodwin's petition is blatantly alleged, and talks about the Conservative government lacking funding for the NHS and doesn't mention the obvious management, where we're talking here today, or whether the local members of the trust are actually doing the right thing for us in our area. I saw the petition last week and I couldn't sign up for exactly that. I absolutely support the thing Ward Six should stay where it's at and I think it crosses boundaries in terms of Weirdale, which is directly next to Hobbles and the amendment. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, councillor Alan Yardman.
Thank you Chair. A couple of things that need to be said, I think we all absolutely agree that this step down through Ward needs to stay. The process, by which it does need to stay, I'd like to ask if it would be confirmed by legal democratic services and as to whether it would be right for that to be considered to be taken in this chamber or if it would be running for the scrutiny in the last.
There is nothing to stop the council writing to the Secretary of State and asking them to intervene in the matter. However, the scrutiny committee does have a specific power under the Health and Social Care Act to refer to the Secretary of State to call it. So the substantive motion is permissible, as is the amendment to go through a scrutiny process which might involve referral to the Secretary of State to call it.
Does anyone else wish to speak on the amendment before I bring councillor Wilkes in? Please pay attention, this is for being thoughtful, very carefully. Does anyone else wish to speak on the amendment before I bring councillor Wilkes in for his right of reply before we move to the votes? So question again, does anyone else wish to speak on the amendment? There'll be no one, I will move therefore to councillor Wilkes for his right of reply. Councillors.
Thank you Chair. I really didn't think the mood when I looked where we're at. I thought this was too straightforward because I think we all agree, or at least I hope we all agree that we don't want this ward closed. The concern that I have here, and I would just point out that this motion wouldn't have been being here if it had been unconstitutional. Because I know we've got a very good legal officer and she would have simply said, and she has quite clearly clarified that.
Chair, can you see the light? It's gone here.
No, I don't think it's working. Can anybody hear me now? Okay, I'll speak up. Everything that everybody said about this motion not just legal has just been shown not to be the case. We can do as we wish in here with the motion that I have put forward. Equally, you can, if you wish, support the amendment, even though I believe that the amendment is a completely new motion. So you don't have to argue that because the legal officer says that. However, I don't for one minute, and I don't for one minute doubt that scrutiny will be robust on the fifteenth. But if many of us suspect that the trust simply turns up, talks the talk and then ignores us, as it has done before, all those other times, we will have missed that opportunity to start the ball rolling. We don't know what day they are going to stop admitting people to that ward. For all I know, it might be between now and the fifteenth, or it might be on the sixteenth. But then it is too late. So to bring it back to full council a month later would be too late because the ward's shut, the staff have been moved, what's the point there? Are we going to force them to move it back in the other direction and go back to where we were before? No, that would be the wrong thing to do. What we need to do is make the point now, get it out there to the public. So we are asking the government to intervene here because it's going to be too late because we don't, we need the Secretary of State to stand up and be counted for the words that he has said previously across this country that he doesn't believe in these things, just as some of our conservative councillors here have said, that is government policy not to do what this, what this trust is doing. Now, make a suggestion to councillor Hobbles. Would she be willing to add to the end of this motion, to her amended motion, that if the trust says to halt this closure plan following the scrutiny meeting, this council agrees to refer this matter to the Secretary of State? Would she be willing to do that or not?
That's a law set. So I wouldn't really agree to that. But that's a law set. There's one we've lost. There's one we've lost.
Chair, can I, can we just keep this together please? One at a time.
What was being told is the answer, no?
Just to clarify, just to clarify, that's the answer, we can only deal with Ward amendment at the time. So you put the question to councillor Hobbles, let's deal with this amendment, let's see what happens with the vote and then we can deal with any further amendments.
Thank you Chair. Then we'll see how we go. But I would say to people that what's basically happened here, that somebody's taken a motion, removed the order entirely, removed everything out of it that's necessary, turned it political that somebody said here, and let this be the thing that was there before. I will be bringing this up at a later date because it clearly is not an amendment, it's a new motion. Do not support this amendment because it is not an amendment.
Thank you councillor Wilkes. And at this point we move to the votes.
So members, the usual process for voting. Three, if you accidentally pressed the wrong button and vote the wrong way, you just press the correct button and that should rectify it. Thank you.
Vote for that vote. For the amendment sixty-two, against for the abstentions, not. The amendment is carried, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Chair, our right to move will definitely be moved in motion by adding and to the end of the motion, following words, and if the trust fails to halt its closure plan following the scrutiny meeting, this council agrees to refer this matter to the Secretary of State. Now, as I was just saying, and the reason that I made this change is that scrutiny may ask for referral to the Secretary of State. No, it's another word. Now, let's just understand something here, may. Scrutiny's made a decision, councillors, yes, councillors will attend, but ultimately it's for those councillors who are for their views. There is no guarantee, according to the end of that meeting, that it will get out, so it is satisfactory to the trust. I do not believe the trust is going to change what it's going to do. I'm absolutely convinced it's not going to change. We might even further delay it, but that is not going to be satisfactory to the staff or for the people of that part of this county. So I move the amendment to the motion as I detail, I don't know if we're going to have a further problem or not.
I'm asking that we have pause in order that can be done. Thank you councillor Wilkes. House Wilkes, do you have anything else to add before I then move on to ask for a second to you? So you, you have the opportunity to speak again. You have one minute. Yes, can I go for a second?
Second amendment. On behalf of the people, would you say this, in the health and earth of staff morale table?
Thank you councillor Wilkes there. So now can we move therefore into the usual frame that is our debate? But councillor Kirk.
I'm concerned, obviously, where we're moving into a situation where every council has a high scrutiny, all members of the scrutiny actually. I trust members of the scrutiny committee, crossbar committee, I trust that we make reference at the right time, the word about the constitution, because this council can't defer to my Secretary of State. I have a spot, response to the law is not allowed.
Please, please, there is one person here speaking.
If I could further solve this, we can ask the Secretary of State in length, council, we can't refer this as a counter to the Secretary of State. The right constitution, the Adults' Wellbeing Committee has the right to infer this to the Secretary of State. First, it was right this council to put a referral report to them, that is the information only. By the constitution, the Adults' Wellbeing Committee has the right to refer this council to law.
Thank you councillor Kirk. I'm going to move to the speakers.
My answer is, I think, as then said legally, if that amendment is the amendment, can we do it? Because I'm assuming that the council, as you wouldn't have upset the scrutiny, the council, as you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have heard it by that, you can't have that done. You're not allowed to say it here, but you're not allowed to say it. So, however, legal, certainly going to allow us to accept something that we can't do. So that's what I'm asking, can we do it? I mean, the capacity to do it might be different, but it could be, and I would prefer.
Thank you for pointing this.
It's, it's good, it's a good point. And I think if, by committing scrutiny to definitely refer it to the Secretary of State if the plans aren't halted, that does arguably better the discretion of the scrutiny committee at, you know, in advance of that meeting before it's had an opportunity to pull it up. So on that basis, it, it would be a lawful motion.
So what the amendment is, that it adds to the council. So is that what you think, that we can't do that legally?
I think, I think council could vote on that, but I would advise scrutiny members that would be considering this, that they would, they would be opening themselves up to arguments of pre-determination and eventually the issue is played by the section we've talked in the debate.
So Chair, if I can also then just come back on the matter, has that not already been true, is the fact that everybody in here agreed that all of them wanted to close anyway? So I would, has that not been true, Chair? Because we haven't had one single person, not, not in the head, or agreed actively filmed, so it's all let everyone to say that everybody in here agreed that one thing shouldn't have forced. So we need to make sure that we have this absolutely agreed because it is all in our mind.
I think there's a distinction in agreeing that you are opposed to something, being predisposed to something, and committing to a course of action in relation to that. It's a bit like if you stand for, you know, an actual particular ticket to say that, you know, you were opposed to Ward Six. But you can still approach the meeting with an open mind. mind, and sort of the comments in relation to this scrutiny, after the full investigation and recommendations. So, no, by voicing the opposition to that, that then it does not automatically amount to pre-determination.
Just clarifying that, but I'd prefer, is that amendment not valid? Can we not do that?
Chair, the point of all the way, councillor Samuel.
For, thank you, councillor, yeah, I shall...
Well, yes, Wilkes, thank you for speaking, I'll be...
For your best, but, can we accept that or not?
I, I recommend that nobody in this room, I mean, as a board of lords, that's the argument, beyond the constitution, and this country position, where it's often beyond the powers, as the amendment, as a statement, where it's helped in trying to investigate it further, our services can be seen, that's uncheated, that's the option, that the House will lay a duty to scrutiny, to refer this to the Secretary of State through the direct procedure, this council can't do that. So I, for one, would be more than that, below line, I recommend that nobody else in this room, this is fair.
Thank you, councillor Chris. Do we have any other speakers? Councillor, yeah?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I've been a member here since inception, since the city's council came together. I've seen some good debates, I've seen passionate debates, I've seen some very good standard debates. But today, I have to say, we talk a lot about people. I think we begin to talk awkwardly around people. It's about the people of Bishop Park and the surrounding areas, this debate's about, not about which council from when the debate was chaired, because the standard of debate there, Phil, has reached a new law. And quite frankly, I, I just toyed with the idea, it's just walking out. Because I, I, quite frankly, I'm ashamed of the political boys on and the points scoring that are people in front of me. We've been given the proper procedure, the due procedure, we know how it works, council put these normal elements and explained it. What we're doing here is bringing shame on this council, in my opinion, and I wouldn't know part of it. The procedure's been explained, there's nothing wrong with the amendment, can we please, please move on and do the right thing? Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on the amendment before I bring councillor Hobbles in for her right to reply? Paul Powell?
Sorry, Chair, just to repeat the earlier point, it still says that it's the amendment's petition, that it's a political petition, and that didn't say a hundred percent, you just said, the local people, I would support that, I can't support without getting any better.
He raises a number of questions, that's a, a, a complex world that nature and our service are in. So, in, in relation to the amendment, I'm quite clear in my mind, the role of scrutiny, the importance of scrutiny in the work that we undertake, and what the outcomes will be, it's a matter that they'll discuss and great for, and if it does need to vote the Secretary of State, the council, the scrutiny will bring it back into this chamber, and then it can be referred on, and that's the process. And I think that's why my amendment is very clear about the process, and what we have to do and the rules to follow, otherwise we are undermining the process that we've put in place, we, collectively, all of us, in terms of the way that we operate. So, I'm making my own decision, as it was, as we voted on, and I believe we've walked through the process that we've got in place, and we then deal with the outcomes out of the agreement, and if that's being spoken to the Secretary of State, that's the decision that comes from, that's what we're doing. I don't think there's any more, that's the direct and the proper way to do business.
Thank you, we now move to the votes.
Once again, members, we're voting on the amendment for the additional words for councillor Wilkes. Please wait for Mel to sound before you press your buttons, your votes are booked. It's one in favour, two against, and three for abstaining. We've still got a couple of votes to be listed, I could ask members to be clear on pressing their buttons, please. So it's one in favour of the amendment, two against, and three for abstaining. It's the councillor Hobbles amendment became a substantive motion, so this is, the additional words for councillor Wilkes is an amendment to that substantive motion.
Twenty-four, four, sixty-six against, twelve abstain.
Four, twenty-four against, sixty-six abstentions, twelve amendment forms.
Okay, so just to be clear, we are now, now going back to the substantive motion moved by councillor Hobbles, and seconded by councillor Lang. We don't have anybody else registered to speak at the moment on that.
I think so, but, maybe you're just one to put it down. I think it's all been said, and I would like to move to the amendment, because now it's more to put back on the screen, if I may, and ask the Chair, with the bottom, the blue flag, not showing, delete the problem, so if you want it to clear, what, what's important on, I care.
Can we move on?